Good afternoon. Want to call on the session, the February 28th, 2017 meeting, the afternoon portion of the meeting. And I think all of you have joined us for the afternoon session. And been a pretty full day thus far. And look forward to the items that are still yet to go. So with that, I'll have Flo call the roles, establish a quorum once again, and we'll get right into the agenda.
Okay, good afternoon Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. Our first items.
For your first item, I do need a motion to continue this to March 1st at 2:30. This is your Cortland and Walnut Grove Special Planning Area Amendments.
Okay, so it continues for 24 hours and 26 minutes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so move. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, okay.
Okay, for your next item, this is the Bradshaw, ARCO AMPM Request for a Use Permit, Special Development Permit and a Design Review. And this is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Bradshaw Road and Kiefer Boulevard in the Cordova Community. And the environmental document is a negative declaration.
All right, Leanne, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Members of the Board. Leanne Moffett, your Planning Director, here to give the staff presentation. This is a request for ARCO AMPM and other facilities. The site is located at the southwest corner of Bradshaw and Kiefer in the Cordova Community. And the request is for a use permit, special development permit and design review on a site zoned for commercial that's a little less than two and a half acres in size. The ARCO service station will have eight pumps, a 24-hour convenience store, and a drive-through car wash. There will be two drive-through restaurants. Both will have amplified sound to take orders. One is associated with the ARCO AMPM itself, and one is a standalone drive-through restaurant. They are also, via the use permit, asking for larger signs for the restaurant via deviation from the sign requirements of the special sign corridor, requesting to have a 10-foot-high sign rather than a 6-foot sign, and a 42-square-foot sign rather than a 24-square-foot sign. They're asking for a special development permit to allow a wrought iron fence rather than a masonry wall adjacent to residential zoning. And I would note that that residential zoning is actually built with Rosemont High School and is the ball field, so it's not actually residences, even though it is residential zoning. And then finally, a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. I also want to point out that correspondence was submitted on Thursday of last week by the applicants, this memo dated February 23rd, where they are volunteering to add three additional conditions that were not in the original board report. The first of these conditions that they have voluntarily put in has to do with designating a parking stall along with an electrical vehicle charging station for use by electrical vehicles. The second additional condition has to do with the county installing a signage into the Rosemont Community. And so they have agreed to show two potential locations in their landscape area for a county-funded sign there. And then finally, an additional fairly lengthy condition here on this slide about ongoing and operational issues which were really around discouraging loitering and nuisance sort of individuals. And as staff, I will say, I think we'll look at this condition because it's written fairly well and is probably one we may want to be including in other ongoing projects. I think it's a pretty good.
This is our District 3 Supervisor taking a leadership role.
Yes, representing.
That's good. Anticipating what life in the future may bring.
Yes. So that's a good condition there, and one I think we'll look at applying in other places as well. So wanted to get those into the record since they weren't in the original board report. Now, moving on with the rest of the presentation, this is an aerial of the site in the vicinity. In particular, I want to point out at the bottom left is the Rosemont High School and the ball fields that are sort of depressed at a lower elevation that are immediately adjacent to the site. This is a rendering of the future facility. We are looking generally south and slightly southwest, so the ball fields would actually be right behind to the north at the top of this slide here, just to orient yourself. And so that is the ARCO AMPM in the upper left, and the canopy there sort of in the center. On the far upper right is the drive-through car wash, and in the right center is the standalone restaurant. Here's an aerial site plan. In this case, the arrow is going north. And so the canopy there is shaded in the center-right with the ARCO AMPM on the bottom, the car wash on the lower left, and the standalone drive-through on the center-left. These elevations are from the design review materials and give you a general sense of the elevation and color scheme and design of the project. The Design Review Advisory Committee actually initially or did vote two to one to recommend denial. The Design Review Administrator supported it, but since that denial, the applicant submitted a revised canopy design which essentially addressed the concerns expressed by the Design Review Advisory Committee in their remarks on their reasons for their denial. We did not send it back to the committee for a revote, but the revised materials essentially addressed their concerns. The Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council heard this in November and voted six to zero to approve. The Planning Commission heard it on January 23rd, voted four to zero to recommend approval. And so staff is here today also recommending approval. Your board report details those specific actions to be taken, but they include determining that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, and adopting the negative declaration, approving the use permit subject to the specified findings and conditions, including for the record, the new additional conditions volunteered by the applicant, approving the special development permit also subject to the same findings and conditions, the design review, and adopting the MMRP. And that is the end of staff's presentation on this. And there is an accompanying item on the alcohol license, and I can do that after we're done with this item.
Okay. Is there any reason why we couldn't call both of those, Krista? Could we call it?
Can do that.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and call that item too, and do the presentation, and we have speakers over here for either or, so.
Excellent.
So for the next item, it's the ARCO AMPM Bradshaw and Kiefer PCN ABC License Hearing to determine whether a public convenience would be served by issuance of a type 20 liquor license. This is located on the southwest corner of Bradshaw Road and Kiefer Boulevard in the Cordova Community.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so if I could have that PowerPoint up also, I will go ahead and run through that. All right, thank you very much. This is the exact same location, so I don't belabor that point. It is a ABC license to determine whether public convenience would be served by the issuance of an off-sale beer and wine liquor license for the ARCO AMPM. We just looked at the aerial there. This is the typical map that we provide you that shows the locations of adjacent facilities that sell either type 20 or type 21 liquor licenses. There are any in this immediate intersection. They are more located to the north, to the south, and over in Rosemont. Again, it's a type 20 license. The need for the PCN is triggered because based on the census population becoming over-concentrated. I would note that in the census district, there's a lot of employment areas, and therefore, the residential population is a little bit less because it's primarily, there's much more employment than there is residences, but the criteria is based on the number of residents. It doesn't really take into account employment. The site is not a high crime area, and the applicants are asking for the liquor license so that they can provide their customers with one-stop-shop for gas, beer, and/or wine and grocery products. We will put the typical business license conditions on this as we do all of these types of facilities. I'm not going to read all the typical business license conditions. They were in your board report. They're on this slide as well as this slide right here. Additional information, the Census Trac Standard allows for two off-sale liquor licenses. Approval of this one will result in three. There are five off-sale licenses within the larger one-mile radius. The site is approximately a quarter mile from the front of the Rosemont High School, and we did work with the school to notify parents of this. And there were none in attendance at the Planning Commission hearing with concerns. And no one, no comments were received, and no one from the public attended the CPAC meeting. So staff is here recommending that you approve the PCN request, which the CPAC also recommended approval of six to zero, and the sheriff is not in opposition with their standard conditions applied via their memo. So that concludes that presentation.
Leanne, maybe you said it. The notice went out to all the parents at the high school, is that correct? This is probably as broad a notification we've done on any recent memory.
Yes, and it was not really part of our typical noticing. It was some noticing that the school needed to do, so we worked with them so that they could do that noticing, yes.
Okay. But again, I think it's important however that came about, and again, I certainly want to, you know, obviously, the applicant paid for that exercise, but I think, you know, because of the proximity, and I know that when I had visited with folks some months ago, that expressed, you know, certainly concern about, you know, one, what, you know, the school as well as parents might, you know, say about proximity as it relates to the proposed use. And I think, again, you couldn't do any greater notification probably than what was done. So I would compliment all the folks involved in making sure that got, that got attended to. And this is a just, this is a off-sale beer and wine. When you say liquor license, it does not include full distilled spirits.
It is beer and wine.
All right. Let me ask other members of the board, any questions of the item? I only have two people sign up to speak on both 50-51 applicant representatives, and so I'll call them forward. But if anyone else is not, who wishes to address this, certainly feel free to approach the clerk, and we'll make sure we call upon you. So I have Scott Patterson and Pete Tobin, if either one or both want to speak to this.
Excuse me, Chairman. Can I have everyone stand to take an oath?
Sworn, and I was just going to say we need to be sworn in ready. So if you're going to offer testimony or comments, respond, please stand and be sworn.
Okay. The appropriate response is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement that you have been sworn.
Great. Well, Mike was going to lead us in the pledge. You were ready to go, I tell you.
I was ready.
Smart leading us to the flag.
Ready to go.
All right, anyway.
So I'll fill out a speaker slip.
That's fine.
I'm Mike Isle from Tykert, and I have been sworn. So excited to be here tonight on the ARCO AMPM project. And could I have the overhead, please? Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we're excited. This has actually been a long process for Tykert going back a number of years for the AMPM project and actually that corner. And so what I thought I'd do, it's been a number of years, but we're going to keep this really short. What I'm going to do is just a really brief presentation on a little bit of the site history, some of the outreach that we've done, probably one or two minutes maybe, and then I'll introduce Scott Patterson from Cowgold Development, and then we'll, the project team will be available for questions. So as we get going here, I'd also want to take a second to thank staff. They've put in a tremendous amount of time and effort on this thing. Special acknowledgement to Leanne Moffett, Leanne Mueller, Tim Hawkins, Emmanuel Mihot. So they've really, really spent a lot of time with us, so we do appreciate that tremendously. So as we get going here, Leanne also already indicated kind of the general project vicinity. We're over here at the southwest corner of Kiefer Boulevard and Bradshaw Road. The site is actually part of the larger Aspen Ford development. This was a master planned planning unit development that Tykert came in for and actually was approved by the County Board of Supervisors back in 2004. That area encompasses Kiefer Boulevard on the north, Mayhew Road on the west, Bradshaw Road on the east, and then some of Tykert's property on the south end. So it was about 114-acre master plan, planning unit development. We started that back in the year 2000 for some of the master planning associated with getting the Rosemont High School on the property with the residential project that's right here called Aspen Village, which has now subsequently been built out, and also for this corner. So this was an anticipated use way back in 2004. We knew at some time, at some point, we would come back in and build out this corner. We've taken special care to let the area build out a bit, and also to identify the right user, which is ultimately, you know, one of our main concerns, how this property builds out, what this looks like years from now, because this corner represents the entryway to some of Tykert's larger land holdings along the Jackson Highway corridor. So this has been very important to us in terms of the right architectural and landscaping feel, look, and then ultimately the correct operator who's going to be in here for the long haul. In terms of outreach on the project, we've spent quite a bit of time, both with the Rosemont Community Association, with the Rosemont High School, with the neighboring property owners in the greater community to develop this project. What we've seen from that outreach is a better project at the end of the day. We've made a number of changes, starting with the west edge adjacent to the property owners who own the small commercial light industrial property where the Fit Eats is located. So we made some changes from a more of a see-through type wrought iron fence to a solid block wall due to some of their concerns with the project. They didn't want to have eyes into their property, so we've agreed to make those changes, make a solid wall on that west side. We've made a number of interior reconfigurations due to outreach with staff from the county, as well as some architectural adjustments that Leanne actually mentioned earlier related to some of the design review comments, made some changes to the overall canopy of the gas station. We also heard some really good comments from the county as well. Leanne mentioned a few of the conditions that have been added to the project, so we've acknowledged the need for the Rosemont entry sign. So we've agreed to provide up to one, you know, location. We'll show two locations, and ultimately the county can decide on where they want that. Some of the modifications to the site to reduce nuisance, potential for nuisance issues later on, and also the addition of the electrical vehicle charging station. So we think overall, this outreach has helped tremendously. It's a much better project as we go forward. We're really proud of it and take this opportunity to introduce Scott Patterson from Cowgold Development. They will be the ultimate owner and operator of the site, and we are excited to have them on board.
Thanks, Mike. And Scott, just while you had your exhibit, please. Let me put the exhibit back just for a second. I just want to point out that where the interface is there between proximity to the football field and obviously the baseball fields, there is quite a great differential from ground level, which those ball fields are located up to the, so there's really no shortcut, wrought iron fence or not, for folks that may want to patronize the, you know, food establishments there, right? I mean, they've got to have to go out and around. They can't get out to Bradshaw Road unless they scale a fence or take, you know, hike up a pretty good, pretty good slope there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a 25 to 30-foot grade differential here along the south side, so yeah.
I just wanted to make the physical distinction, and it's not, the arrow doesn't show quite as well. People are familiar with the site, so maybe all my colleagues knew that. I just want to be sure that there's, it sits much higher than all of that, and so the chances of somebody, you know, getting a hamburger or a soda and then coming over to fencing down to the ball games is going to be fairly rare, if at all, so.
Right. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, yeah, thanks, Mike. If you have to, Scott, just tell us you've been sworn when you introduce yourself, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board Supervisors. My name's Scott Patterson, and I have been sworn.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you for having us today. And I'd also like to say a thank you to the planning staff who have worked diligently with us and with Tykert. And I also want to extend a thank you to Tykert, who has been the most involved landowner seller that I've ever been involved with, and it's been to the good of the project. They've helped with design and their theme that they've started out there, and that's been really, really beneficial to the project. So thank you, Mike, and Randy, and team. California Gold has been in business for over 35 years. We're based in our little hometown, Sonora, up the hill. And so we've been in the real estate development game, as well as we're owner/operators of AMPMs. And so I'd like to quickly just take a few minutes, talk about our Bradshaw project. This is a well-designed project that we've spent a lot of time on the architecture, and as you see on the overhead, this will be one of the nicest AMPMs that you've ever seen. We've taken the time to make sure that it's well-designed and will be aesthetically pleasing. This is a safe and secure site. It's well-lit. That's important to us that our customers and soccer moms and folks feel very safe when they come to our site. That's important to us. We have a strong site plan with great access and circulation and good parking. We also have over 40 security cameras that I want you to know are on-site. As I mentioned, it's well-lit with security cameras, and we keep those tapes on file for over 30 days. So we're real excited about the plan, and we hope you like it as well. We're also here today, as was mentioned, for our PCN and our type 20 off-site beer and wine license. And we want you to know that we take the sale of alcohol very seriously. My brother's here with me today, who's my business partner, and he has three kids, one in high school and two in eighth grade. I have three high schoolers. And the sale of alcohol to underage kids is a non-starter for us. And we have a no-tolerance policy for that, or a zero-tolerance policy. We also have a carding program where we just eliminate the risk and card everyone, which makes it pretty easy. We have a zero-tolerance policy for our employees who don't follow that program. And of course, that's, that works real well for us. And we've never had an issue in all of our other stores. We're also in agreement with the sheriff's conditions and different conditions in the, in the conditions of approval. We also have had, as was mentioned earlier, unanimous support from the CORP PAC and for the PCN. In terms of economic development, we're going to employ between 15 and 20 people on a full and part-time basis. And then the quick-service restaurants that are adjacent, we'll also employ between 15 and 20. We're also going to invest approximately $6 to $7 million in this project, and we're going to hire local subcontractors whenever we can. We make a practice of doing that in our business. So. can. We make a practice of doing that in our business. So we're real excited that we've had great support. We, as Mike mentioned, we've communicated with you different associations in the community, out in the area, the Rosemont Association, CORPAK. We've communicated with the school and the neighbors, and we've had unanimous support. And we really attribute that to good communication and a strong design. This project certainly fills a need in the area. There's a need for commercial services, lots of employees around, and there'll be great economic benefit to the county and to this local area. In conclusion, we are in agreement with the conditions before you today, and we request your support, and we're certainly here to answer any questions. My architect is also here, Pete Tobin, if you have any questions of him. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any questions of Scott or Pete? Good. Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Just a question for, this is for transportation. I see Mike Penrose. Mike, we had with the, the smud went in across the way. We, there was a bit of a snafu on the landscaping for trees along the Bradshaw quarter. Has that all been worked out so that as development, this is probably the, you know, sole development for some time along this stretch, but it's on the other corner. I mean, they show a nice landscaping plan, so this doesn't pertain to the applicant as much as it does. Did we get that worked out with the sanitation district relative to trees?
Yes, we have.
So that's, okay, so that won't be.
Should not be any constraint in this site.
Okay, good. Thanks a lot. Appreciate you coming. Didn't expect to get called upon. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Matt, John, anybody? Nope. All right. Have no one else signed to speak then. And with that, I would just compliments to certainly to our staff, to the applicant, to landowner Tykert, and to all the other players. And I would move all the recommended actions, both on the use permit and the environmental document, as well as the PCN.
Second.
Is that for both items?
Yeah, for both items, yes. Okay. Motion second. Nothing further, please.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next items next, what, till 2:30?
Just have a couple minutes.
Okay, next item's at 2:30. So we'll take a, do you want to take up anything else or appointments?
You want to do the nominations?
Yeah, we'll take our appointments. We've got a couple minutes here, so.
Okay, that would be item 53.
Okay.
You guys have your stuff. Okay. So for item 53, your nominations, you are continuing to March 7th, the Adult and Aging Commission, Children's Coalition, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Youth Commission. Continuing to March 21st, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your items today, we have the Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council.
Okay. Chiefs have interviewed and recommend a reappointment of the incumbent, Maureen Fitzgerald, and continue the remainder to April 11th.
For the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to March 7th.
Okay. And for the Law Library Board of Trustees, Chairman.
Recommended, again, chiefs have interviewed, recommend to reappoint the incumbent, June Coleman.
For the Maternal, Child, and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Chairman.
Okay. It's recommended that, for parent representative seat, Robin Blanks-Guster. There's been a letter attached from Head Start recommending her, and the chiefs have also interviewed. And then we continue the remainder until March 21st.
And then the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to nominate Diane Abbott to fill the expired term of Jay Freelove, and I want to continue the remaining to March 21st.
Okay. And then for the Public Health Advisory Board.
I have a number of interviews pending, so continue to March 21st, 2017.
Okay. And then for your Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to nominate Zachary Arbios. I want to continue the remaining to March 21st.
Okay, and this concludes your nominations.
Okay, we'll come back to the, from our own ranks, we'll call the next.
We'll come back to that, yes. Okay, for your 230 item, this is item number 52. This is the Planning Commission revocation of the Howe Operations Use Permit and Variance. It's a public hearing to appeal the revocation of a use permit and variance for Howe Operations located on Bradshaw Road in the west side of the Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard community. And I do want to say that if there's public testimony, that we need to take an oath on this as well.
Okay, well, why don't I go ahead and do that then? I went, I mean, it's time to speak. I see the applicant's representative here and maybe others. So if there's anyone going to be speaking on this, please, or think you may want to, please stand and be sworn. Testimony being thrown.
And the appropriate response is, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record and state the statement I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you. I know, again, we had this on our agenda just a little more than four weeks ago. And at that time, it was suggested there would be a meeting, and I trust staff will give us a summary of the meeting with the applicant, applicant's representative, other parties, air quality district representatives, and planning and code enforcement. And we said we'd come back here, see what sort of progress, if any, had been made or was contemplated, recognize obviously that a number of things that would be required, that were required previously, certainly weren't going to be accomplished in a four-week period, but there needed to be at least some indication that there was some, some forward progress. But nonetheless, probably, we're going to have the hearing here today anyway, so, okay. And so I'll let you introduce yourself and tell us what you know about what's happened the last four weeks.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I do have a presentation. So, good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. I am Jessica Brandt with Planning and Environmental Review. At your January 24th hearing, as stated, the board continued consideration of this appeal to today at the request of the appellant. Staff has prepared this presentation to provide a background on the revocation action, as well as an update on communication with the operator since the hearing. On October 24th, 2016, the Planning Commission revoked a use permit and variance granted to Howe Operations to run a wood chipping and recycling facility at 5260 Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard community. Community development staff had requested the revocation due to ongoing failure by the operator to comply with use permit conditions of approval, which contributed to multiple zoning code violations while the operator conducted business on the site. I will provide an overview of the violations, but representatives from the code enforcement division are in attendance to respond to any detailed questions the board may have regarding these violations after the presentation. During the revocation process, community development staff became aware of parallel enforcement activities being undertaken by the County Environmental Management Department and the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District related to the operator's lack of compliance with solid waste facility and stationary air pollutant source permitting requirements. Representatives from both of these entities are also prepared to speak further regarding their experiences with the operator after this presentation, if requested by your board. The operation has a lengthy history of noncompliance, as detailed in the board letter and supporting documents. In summary, wood waste stockpiling and chipping operations began on the site in 2004. After being notified that a use permit was required for the stockpiling, chipping, and recycling activities, the operator applied in 2007, which was then approved in 2011, conditioned on site improvements. No site improvements were made. However, wood waste stockpiling continued on the site over the next three years with intermittent grinding and hauling activity. A code enforcement case was opened in 2015 after notification that site operations did not appear to comply with zoning standards. After attempts by the code enforcement division to obtain site compliance were largely ignored, and the hazard of allowing the stockpiles to remain became increasingly a concern, this revocation process was started in late 2015. This is a quick visual of the site condition. While this photo is from 2014, estimates by environmental management staff who have done site visits recently indicate that 2,000 to 3,000 tons of wood waste remain on the site today. Further, at a recent site visit on February 17th, code enforcement confirmed numerous inoperable vehicles and junk and rubbish at various locations on the site. In contrast.
Jesse, just let me ask you. So was that site visit in conjunction with meetings that were held with the applicant and/or discussions with the representatives?
Yes.
Okay, I just, again, I know you had this presentation prepared before that.
Yeah.
It'd be helpful to kind of know, because they at least get some indication that there was, you know, a meeting that occurred that, you know, wasn't under some sort of warrant order, it was done under a property approach, at least for inspection, so.
Yeah, it was an agreed-upon inspection.
It was, okay, okay.
Yeah, with the operator's representative in attendance.
Very good. Okay, thanks.
So in contrast, this is the approved 2011 site plan for Howe Operations. Generally, the site was split into two areas. I don't know if this is going to work. The first is a large vacant area encompassing the western half of the property. The second area is the eastern half of the property comprising the proposed developed operations area. Oops, sorry. There we go. Thank you. This is a detail, a close-up of the operations area that was approved. Key items I'd like to highlight are the approximately acre and a half work area, the delineated truck path around that work area, perimeter walls and fencing that were proposed along the north and southeast property lines, the new relocated wider driveway to the south of the existing home along Bradshaw, and roadway landscaping and improvements. Prior to January of this year, no site improvements had been installed, and the work area had expanded significantly beyond what was originally outlined. I don't want to belabor, but multiple agencies have invested significant resources to address the operator's ongoing lack of compliance. The lead code enforcement officer has made a total of six site visits to the property, issued five notices of violation and one administrative penalty, and I'll detail those in a little bit. And then as stated earlier, air quality and environmental management are also undergoing enforcement activities related to their respective regulatory requirements. Context photos, this is a photo taken facing west from the existing drive on the property, looking to the property to the left on the, the photo, and then the adjacent property is Creek Crush, GNR Trucking, to the right. The, I wanted to note that the operator has recently installed a concrete barrier, also known as a K-rail, along a portion of this shared northern property line. This is a photo taken in May of 2015. Again, another approved coordinated site visit. This photo was taken of some of the piles on site. And again, there are additional photos from the February 17th visit as well available. The Planning Commission at their hearing on October 24th unanimously approved staff's recommendation to revoke the use permit and the variance. In doing so, the commission adopted findings that the operator's intent to comply with the required conditions of approval appeared absent, and that stockpiling of materials constituted operations of the facility. The commission requested that code enforcement work on an abatement plan for the site as soon as feasible. On November 2nd, the operator appealed the commission's Board hearing was on January 24th, and as the chair noted, the board did grant the applicant the request for continuance, and the operator representative committed to continued cleanup and site improvement work, and staff committed to meeting with the operator representative to further coordinate that cleanup. So since the January hearing, the regulatory agencies that I've mentioned met as a group with the applicant representative on February 6th. At that meeting, a coordinated regulatory compliance guidance document was provided to the operator representative. Key immediate actions from the guidance document, which is included in attachment one of your packet, including payment of existing fines and fees, removal of inoperable vehicles and junk and rubbish on the site, submitting improvement plans for the new driveway, and that all material shall be removed from the site without chipping. The representative committed to paying fines, removing equipment, and further inspections, one of which was the February 17th inspection with code enforcement. Code enforcement at that inspection confirmed that significant amounts of materials in inoperable vehicles were still on the site. Air quality staff has met with the operator and a representative, they did that on Friday, the 24th, to begin negotiations on settling air quality violations. The operator representative reports that they have installed the concrete barrier along the northern property line, though, again, it's not fencing, which is the ultimate required site improvement, and that work on a block wall around the southern residential property has begun. Staff has not confirmed the block wall. And then finally, I believe, the operator's engineer did submit improvement plans today. Fines and fees, as of this morning, it's reported that no outstanding code enforcement or environmental management fines or fees have been paid. In addition, staff has informed earlier this week of outstanding building permit violation fees also owed. The current balance of code enforcement fines and penalties is $7,117.52. Environmental management fees and penalties is $3,606.75. Building inspection fines and penalties, $1,271.1. And as I mentioned, air quality also has outstanding fines related to equipment violations that they've been in discussions with the applicant about.
Jesse, just a clarification. So on the building fines and violation fees, was, there may have been some notices, but was that shared in the meetings that you had, or that you said that was just learned earlier this week? Well, today's only Tuesday.
No, it was not shared in the meetings. The notice of payment was sent to Jody Howe, and it's date, it dates back from 2015, I believe.
Okay, so again, it was, again, in combing our files, we found that there was outstanding issues, but they should have known that. But nonetheless, that wasn't, but, but the other two, the $3,000 for EMD and the $7,000 for code enforcement, those were discussed previously and were known to the applicant prior to this week, I guess.
Correct, yeah. Re-noticing was sent.
And you said there was, was there any discussion, and again, I'll let the applicant speak on their own behalf, but at the time when you had this roundtable over the last couple of weeks, was there discussion about payment of those? And was there any indication whether that be forthcoming, or whether it was, would people just mute on that point, or what?
No, there, there was discussion.
Yeah.
And there was agreement that they would be paid.
Okay, so that was where you, staff understood that there would be payment prior to today's hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So, in closing, since the last hearing, the operator has made minimal progress towards taking the immediate actions identified. Staff continues to be concerned, given the length of time that the current violations have persisted, that bringing operations into full, ongoing compliance is unlikely. Therefore, staff continues to recommend the board uphold the Planning Commission's revocation of the use permit and variance. Thank you.
Let me ask my colleagues questions of staff on any aspect of this, or any follow-on that wasn't in the report. Okay. Am I good? Just, Jessica, one other question before you leave the, the.
Sure.
The, in, in the discussions with applicant, I mean, they submitted plans. I mean, it was, said that we're going to do it the next day, but I, at least they got them in before we heard the item. And in, in your understanding of the payment, that wasn't made. But what about, so what was discussed? You talked about the kind of the formation of a financial settlement, but also of a plan. Can you share, and maybe your colleagues from EMD and/or air quality want to present that?
Yeah, I think I would leave that to air quality management, or air quality to discuss the settlement.
Because it relates to the material on site, and I know I've had my staff briefing on this, but, and the, I guess, inability for the current chipper machine that's neither available to Mr. Howe and his, his folks and/or that's on site, that that's not going to pass muster and get a permit. So there would be, need to be some other sort of equipment secured in order to accomplish that, recognizing the material was, exceeds what was allowed for a new use permit. So the conversations along those lines were?
There, there have been conversations with. There have been conversations with air quality staff related to that, because I do believe there is at least one piece of equipment that is on-site that could potentially be utilized, but they can get more into that.
All right, because again, I, you know, getting compliance, there are different ways to get compliance, you can say haul all the way, haul all the way to landfill, I'm not sure if that's the smartest thing to do, on the other hand, you know, we certainly don't want to reward behaviors that, you know, end up with, you know, stockpiles of material that were not permitted. And so I guess I'm kind of curious, and so maybe you're not the person, maybe I can ask, I don't know if it's you, Dave, or whoever from AQMD, can at least talk about if there was a inclination to go in that direction, that's not staff's recommendation, that wasn't your recommendation four weeks ago, and I appreciate the, you know, the presentation and the work that's been done, thus, you know, as a follow-up, but I guess I'd like to hear from air quality and EMD if necessary, but certainly air quality as to...
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli and members of the board. So, yeah, we've...
And you're Dave Gross, and you've been sworn, right?
Yes, I am Dave Gross, Stationary Source Division Manager for the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District. We are in negotiations regarding our penalty. The penalty is for operation of unpermitted source, sources of air pollution. Specifically, at question were three chipper grinder units. Two of them are what's known as Tier Zero, which are no longer able to be used anywhere statewide, they've been phased out through state law. And then one Tier One engine, which is still an older, a little dirtier than some of the newer technology out now, that currently has an existing portable equipment registration on it. But because this is a facility, long-term, that's not a solution unless he obtains a district permit for that as well. And he has no current district permits to operate at that facility for the purposes of mediating any, any stockpile issues. We've agreed to allow him to use perp at that location, so he can use an existing piece of equipment if it's properly perped, but that would only be to mitigate the issue to the point where it's acceptable to county staff.
Okay, so you would allow them to use that chipper under prescribed conditions to reduce the amount of material on-site and properly chip it?
That would be a temporary solution.
Okay.
Going forward, we would require a permit. To date, we have not received a permit application. We've received partial information from the respondent regarding, some information that we would need to both evaluate the permit and evaluate the case that we're working on, so.
Dave, let me ask you, if it's a fair question to ask you, but assuming somebody were to go at this, you know, with a strong desire to come into compliance, obviously the material, once it's shredded or chipped, has to be removed off the site as well, so I guess there has to be a place to take it to, but with the amount of materials there, with your knowledge of the equipment and capacity, assuming that you devoted folks, at least working hours, to doing that, could that be taken care of fairly quickly, or is that, is it a matter of weeks, or days, or months, or...
I don't have a good feel for that.
Yeah.
You know, I personally haven't seen the amount of material out there. We know that there's a specific capacity for the chipper grinder unit that we think is the one that's anticipated being used, and I don't know how that would translate.
Okay, and I can ask the applicant, he can probably respond, I was curious, you guys, you know, obviously you're, you permit a lot of different types of equipment, and recognizing, I'm talking about necessarily 24/7 operation, but what it would take to actually come into compliance, because there is a, under the existing use permit, they're allowed to stockpile a certain portion of material, and they exceed that by how much? Roughly, what's your estimates?
So, the estimate is that there's 2,000 to 3,000 tons on the site currently.
Right.
The, the actual approval was more of an area in which they could work, which is roughly 15 feet by 30 feet high per pile, 30-foot diameter by 12-foot high stockpile, two areas of that, so...
So, has anybody done a calculation, Jessica?
No.
So, we don't know if they're two times as much, three times as much, only half as much?
I mean, I would, I think it's 10 to 20 times as much.
Okay.
Yeah, currently.
Somebody could figure that out, I trust, at least volume and occupying space, but I just, again, I'm trying to get some sense of how much is too much, or, you know, or what, and again, because we're being asked, can obviously take a very serious action here, and certainly in light of a lot of staff work, revocations is no small matter, we don't see these very, very often at all. I count on one hand the number we've ever seen on this board in all the years I've been on it, so it's just, you know, it's a serious matter, and obviously, staff has done a very, you know, thorough job in preparing for today. I just, but again, those are the types of questions I think that need to be, at least have answers behind them, so, maybe somebody could do a rough calculation while we're taking more testimony. Dave, anything else you want to add?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I can be available for anything after the fact.
All right, let me ask, environmental management, did you want to present anything? EMD, is there anything you wanted to put on record? No? Okay. All right, if there's, Lisa, anything? No? No, okay.
We have questions.
Okay, all right, with that then, we've had the staff presentation, and again, we've seen the recommendations, and I heard an update of what transpired over the last 30 days, so with that, I'll call applicant representative, Mr. Saman, and if you'll just state your name for the record and tell us you've been sworn, and allow you then to present and respond, and tell us what you think about all this.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman and the board. My name's Nabil Saman, I've been sworn. Thank you for allowing us to have 30 days to kind of get this thing rolling. I promised four things the last time I was here. We almost got all four done, but not quite, so, the things that we didn't get done that I really wish we would have was to pay the fines that are outstanding, that's about $11,000. The reason we haven't got that done is because we just don't have the funds at the moment, my client doesn't have the funds, we're in escrow on a loan that's supposed to close this week, that will help fund the payment of those, so, you know, if we had an additional time, we could get those paid. As far as the air resources board, the fine for that's about $125,000. I've met with them, we've got that down to $75,000 at this point, but the facts are a little unclear. I'm making an inquiry into the information they have, so I can advise my client on getting that. So, it's not a small matter, it's a big chunk of change. As far as the other things that we promised, we did do the north wall, we've got a K-rail there, that was recently done over the last 30 days, and I'd point out that we've had this unimaginable historic amount of rain, and that is just, as much as I want to push some of these things, we just simply can't, it doesn't make sense. So, the south wall, we're ready to work on it, but it's so muddy out there, we just can't do it.
So, let me ask you that, Mr. Saman, so the, if I looked at the plans correctly that Jessica portrayed, that the original use permit didn't call for K-rail, called for a chain link fence along that northern boundary line to separate future properties, is that correct?
Yes.
It wasn't a wall, it was a chain link fence?
A chain link fence.
Chain link fence, okay, so I guess, in light of, is understanding that you're not prohibited from putting K-rail, but is there, is that part of the plan, was K-rail going to be sufficient from your, from your clients, or was a, was a chain link fence in the, in the plan?
We met with Anthony Santiago, we've had several meetings, so I can discuss those individually.
Okay, sure.
We met with Anthony and kind of talked about the situation out there in one of the meetings, and the adjoining neighbor that's grinding the concrete has encroached onto our property, so, we got that encroachment removed, and to put a fence there didn't make sense, because it would just get bowled over. So, we've got a K-rail, which, the whole idea of the plan was to have a separation from the property lines. The K-rail's the best resolution, and I think the county and staff's happy with the K-rail.
Yeah, I don't think they're incompatible uses, which are both become industrial use, but I get, I did, that wasn't what was in the plan, so it sounds like there's been some communication with staff relative to whether that would be substantive compliance, I don't know, Leanne, at some juncture, you can maybe speak to that, but before we conclude the hearing as to whether, if he's been talking to Tony Santiago in, you know, land survey and permit section, then whether that's been cleared with planning.
Chair Natoli?
Yes.
I do want to correct, Jared Wickliffe reminded us that while on the actual site plan, it does say chain link fence.
Right, that's what I was reading.
The condition 21 of the original approval states, "Provide a physical barrier between the property to the north and the use permit property. The barrier shall be a fence, K-rail, or other means that clearly defines the property line and prevents materials from the unrelated business to spill over onto the other property."
Okay.
So, I do think that the K-rail is a reasonable substitute.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. Did you then put for the entire property boundary, or did you just, for a portion coming down into the...
The entire northern, northern property line.
Okay, so you've satisfied that condition that hadn't here before, and so, okay.
So, we did that, and I had mentioned that we'd moved a telephone pole before, so, you know, that was a 25 or 30 grand, that was already done. The southern wall that goes around that southern neighbor, we just, we couldn't do it, it's too muddy, I mean, that, so that's on hold. There's some equipment, primarily the shredders, there's two shredders on the property that are not legal to be used on the property. I talked to air resources, we had a meeting this last week, and we kind of have an understanding that they're not going to be used, if they are used, we'll notify them. They wouldn't be used for shredding, they would just be used to, for maintenance purposes, so we can get those sold. So, that was okay with air resources board, at least at this point in time. He's in the process of acquiring a...
Well, I think, Mr., just clarify the difference between air resources board and...
I've heard you say air resources board now a few times, that's a state agency, I think you mean the air quality management district.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. He is our local representative on the air resources board, so he...
I want to know if I'm missing something.
Anyway, okay, air quality district, got it.
It's my understanding there, the enforcement arm for air resources board, but I'm not positive about that. So, then we have this other piece of equipment that we're in the process of buying, and some other ideas that we're also thinking about.
What about all the other vehicles? I mean, we saw that aerial, again, that wasn't real, it was current enough, though, I mean, so of all that, all that stuff, I mean, muddy or not, you can probably get most of that out of there, I don't know where it would go to, but it's not permitted on the site, I don't believe, so...
It's my understanding that the equipment can be...
Equipment, oh, yeah, equipment, but what about, but there's other, it looks like cars and pickups?
There's a couple cars, we can clean them up and get them off there, that's certainly possible. I did meet with the violations department out on the site, and we walked the entire site.
Did you get a punch list?
I did not get a punch list at that time, but I can do that, and we're happy to get rid of a couple of cars or clean up the site.
Well, again, I see Jared's here in the audience, so again, I trust you're the inspector on this particular site, Jared?
What's up? Walked the property.
Rosa Orion.
Oh, okay.
So, I didn't get a punch list, but we can certainly work on that, that's not a big issue. And so I think we were pretty successful on, on the major topics that I promised the board that we would do, which was the north wall, getting started on the south wall, and then we got the plan submitted. That was really important, because that will allow us to do the site improvements. It's more likely than not that we'll do a fee in lieu instead of site improvements, and that's what the adjoining neighbor did, so we probably won't end up doing a sidewalk, curb, and gutter, we'll pay the county a fee in lieu. Anyway, so that, that process would be pretty quick, and we'd be up and running as far as the conditions of the use permit. And then we just need to pay the fines, and we need to get a valid piece of equipment there, which I've talked to air resource about, and that's an extremely complicated issue, and so we're working to conform so that they're satisfied.
What about the amount of material, Mr. Saman, because, again, the estimates, and, you know, Jessica did the back of the envelope, but, again, the aerials, best we can go by here today, and, you know, I haven't been on the site, I've been on GNR's site a couple of years ago when they ran for their request, and, so, as far as the stockpiling, and, you know, this is a year, obviously, when a lot of other trees come down and so forth, but has, has any movement of materials in, has that ceased completely?
Absolutely, and no new materials come in for quite a long time. The only material that was moved was to move it out of the 500-foot setback, so some of that material was ground removed, that was quite a while ago. So, there's one existing pile. You were wondering about how long it would take to remove that, I would assume about two weeks of a fully operating machine, and we have a machine that can be permitted for that use, and permitted long-term on that site, is my understanding, the red machine, eventually, if that's what's decided, but there's other options, like bringing electricity and using electric motor, or using a brand-new machine, which would cost approximately a million dollars, so, these aren't simple decisions to make it a profitable project, and the owner's trying to facilitate that process, of getting rid of the two old machines out of the state, and using that money to fund a purchase of a newer machine, so we're not having these issues. One of the things the owner does is he has two businesses, one, he goes on-site to Orchards up north in Ube City, and then the other business he has would be on this site, so he has a, he would like to have a machine that would accomplish both those goals. The red machine, as I understand it, won't accomplish the goal, and the two other machines definitely don't.
Okay, so those are, those are going.
So, there's some issues that we're working on to come into compliance on that, and it's, it's going to take a while, because it's a lot of money, so, but I think generally we are successful, other than paying the $11,000 fines, which I'm told will be done within the next week, and we'll have that southerly wall done pretty quick, our plans are in, so we're waiting on the county to get back to us on that. Those issues are pretty easy if we do a cash-in lieu, and then it's a matter of getting a...
So, you'd be able to pay that, is that contemplated in the, in the loan that's being considered, and I don't want to get into proprietary business, but I just, I mean, again, that's going to be, not just doing payable, it's not just about saying, well, we'll get to it when we get to it, it's, I mean, and then...
No, I'm, I'm representing to the board that the use of the funds for this loan are to pay these fines.
As well as the in lieu, because that's, that's a trigger, that's why I asked you about that, and again, if you need to consult with your client, fine, but I mean, that's, otherwise, it's just, you buy more time, you pay $11,000 in fines, and you get this plans, sit on the plan check shelf for months until somebody satisfies the, assuming that's what's contemplated, rather than installing the, you know, curb gutter and sidewalk, and if staff's supportive, that's generally an acceptable condition.
I think, from my understanding of the loan, that he's, the amount of the loan, it would be enough to pay these fines, I'm referring to the $11,000 of the county, and it would be enough to pay the cash-in lieu.
Okay, okay.
What about the $75,000 to the air resources?
At this point, we're negotiating that amount, so...
We've already negotiated it down from 110 or 25 to 75, do you really think you're going to get it lower than that?
We didn't negotiate that amount, there was an error in the facts that they had, so they...
Oh, you said negotiated earlier, though.
That was the meeting, that once they've got some additional facts, then they realized that the $125,000 was incorrect, but we really haven't negotiated that, and we're trying to work together.
Well, say they cut it in half, is there enough net proceeds in the financing to pay all these fines?
No.
How much?
There wouldn't be enough to pay.
There wouldn't be enough, okay, well, I appreciate the honest answer, I mean, that's why you asked the question.
I took all, so I got to tell the truth, that's my understanding, is there wouldn't be enough to pay everything, so, you asked the question, I'm telling you the truth.
Any idea what the in lieu fees would be for curb gutter sidewalk, well, that's probably pretty significant, I mean...
I, when you say significant, I mean, it, maybe 25 grand, maybe 30, somewhere in there, for curb sidewalk and gutter, it's not that much, there's no special storm drain that's required as fire, you know, and I'm not an engineer, so, but I don't think it's going to be exorbitant, there would be enough for it to pay the $11,000 and to pay fees, and then, then we could kind of be up and running if we got a chipper that was permitted.
Well, I think getting into compliance, and certainly if there's, you know, whatever the settlement is, obviously, those will be monies that'll be owed to the district, and they have avenues to pursue in the event that they, you know, if their promise is not paid, but, you know, I think, reason for a lot of the questions here today, and certainly, obviously, why you were called into it, is that, you know, there hasn't been a, a real good basis for believing that certain things were going to occur, for whatever reasons, again, I don't pass judgment on people's circumstances, but, you know, nonetheless, that's what brings us here today, and, and one of the recourse that we have, and it's a powerful one, obviously, is to revoke the land use entitlement, obviously, which then, you know, basically terminates the, the business use that's contemplated here, and, so, I think that, you know, there's been some evidence of progress being made, again, it may be late in the game, and nonetheless, I think it certainly is, it shows some good faith movement, and I appreciate the representation here, again, and staff, you know, they may still be biting their lips about this, because obviously, you know, it's been, you know, been tough getting here, and, you know, they don't, they don't think it's lightly either, and neither do I, I mean, I think clearly this is a use that, you know, can provide benefit for recycling of materials, and obviously, you know, I guess generate cash. cash, well, if it's done, done properly. But on the other part of that is, it needs to be done in accordance with the rules, otherwise, you know, it, you know, you don't have the rules, and people aren't going to pay attention to them, so. Well, anything else, Mr. Cern, you wanted to add on behalf of the applicant? I have a-
I just had two things. One, I appreciate you giving us the 30-day extension to show our good faith, and I think staff would tell you that when they've emailed me, I've responded promptly. We've had three or four meetings now with the various departments. I've made myself available to everyone, to, you know, so we've come a long way from where we were before I got involved, so I'm doing my best.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Frost, may I ask you, I have questions for you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the financing. Is the loan, you said it was expected to close in the next week. Is it approved or a conditional approval?
It's approved. It's an approved loan, they're in escrow. It's supposed to fund any day now.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe, again, maybe with that in mind, I guess I'd look to staff, that, you know, I'm still of the mind that if, if we don't take the recommended staff action, that this has to have a pretty short, short string on it, and, and not to continue to have repetitive hearings here, but to actually see progress, that payments are being made on obligations that are a part of, you know, the enforcement and, and the process that brings us here, and that in accordance with, you know, what's being permitted, that, you know, the conduct of the business is going to be one that's going to, you know, toe the line, and, and Mr. Howe and his associates will, you know, do what's required of them, and, you know, and that wouldn't be a problem. But I, but I'm not inclined to just, you know, set this aside, and I don't know where my colleagues are on this, and again, we could carry this on the agenda with a progress report, again, not to take our time, nor your time, or staff's time, but I, but I, I, I'm not prepared to let go of the revocation at this point in time. I do think there's been some progress that have been made, you may look differently in the eyes of, of some folks. I think some of the code enforcement issues need to be dealt with, and you've got code officers here, and I think those are things that, a couple more days of drying time, you can move vehicles out of that pit, if not now. And if there are some things as it relates to moving materials, and getting them more confined to areas that, you know, where they'll actually be properly chipped and so forth, again, I don't have all, all those things nailed down, but I guess I would be inclined, again, to, you know, if you're representing that both the in lieu and the, you know, fines and penalties, with the exception of what's going to be ultimately determined at the Air Quality District, or, you know, you're prepared, declined to make good on those as soon as this loan closes. And I don't know if that was disclosed to, to staff, because I guess I was, maybe that was, you know, I heard Jessica say that, you know, they understood that we're going to be paid immediately, and-
I had made that representation in the prior board meeting.
Okay, okay, all right, appreciate that. So that's kind of, my thinking is, if we keep this on-
Are you going to come back for comments from the board?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know if there's anything else from Mr. Cern, though. Okay, all right. Anything else? Staff wants to add, and then we'll come back to the board, anything else?
I did want to report back on the amount of tonnage that the current use permit allows.
Okay.
And just a rough calculation, depending on weight, there's different weights of wood. We have between 10 and 16 tons, so the current amount would be roughly 200 times what they're allowed to have on the site, just back of the envelope.
Okay, so that's a lot.
It's a lot.
More than a day's worth. Okay, anything else? Let me just, Jared, if I could just ask you, or Rosa, whoever's handling this, so relative to, you know, other code, code items are out there beyond what the use permit called for as far as improvement, so what about vehicles and those types of things? What was, I asked if we give a punch list, but did, so I assume there's a listing, but it hasn't already been given to the applicant? That could be detailed as to what would have to occur relative to particularly vehicles? What's on the site?
I don't think we've, vehicles, there's been a couple inoperable vehicles. I don't think they ever made it on a violation notice.
Oh, well, I thought, Jessica pointed that out, you said there was, there was-
The violation notice.
There's 12 different, about 12 different violations enumerated on the violation notice.
Okay, and, and-
Oh, well, Rosa-
So you guys, you folks were at the meeting, then? You were at the, you folks, and did you talk about, one of your needs is going to, so you talked about how we're going to come to compliance on the code issues. Some of those related to fencing and the conditions of approval, I get that, but aside from that, other code issues that weren't necessarily related to, you know, physical improvements that had to be made, what, could you detail those?
Only other violations that existed separate from the, the development standards-related use permit was night watchman's quarters, and I think that's it.
Right, which has been corrected.
Okay, okay, so, so it has been corrected, okay. And that was what, a night watchman's quarters that wasn't allowed, been the permit, or was provided for?
Correct, it was added to the property without a building permit, and they started their case in 2011 to pursue that. And then when we started our case, based on the complaint of the, the storage materials, we also added it for not having the proper use permit.
But that's been removed?
It has since been removed.
Okay, and what about vehicles? Are there any vehicles that need to be moved off of the site, or those are all?
It being zoned, the M2-
They could have those vehicles there?
We're not that concerned.
Okay, okay, I, I just wanted, I wanted to get some sense about that. So there's not, outside of those related to use permit, there's not any other building or zoning violations, then? I mean, there are the ones you've delineated, fencing and improvements and so forth, and too much material.
Correct, that's what we're addressing right now.
Okay, okay, that's what you're addressing, okay.
Technically, yes, the vehicle storage is a violation of that zone, because it doesn't have its development standards in place to do industrial-
Yeah, right, okay, I got you. But if they had the fencing and so forth, they-
Back there in violation, but that's not really why we're there.
Okay, okay.
Two vehicles, we can live with that. We're after bigger problems.
All right, thanks, Jared, thanks, Rosa, okay, good. All right, I'll bring back to my colleagues, Ms. Peters.
Thank you. I understand everything clearly here. There's $25,000 in in lieu fees, $11,000 in code violation fees, up to $75,000 in AQMD fees, plus a comment that he needs new equipment to accomplish certain things. I see no evidence that the owner has any interest in following code or county regulations, in looking at how long this has been going on, and the kinds of complaints from code, not putting in the road correctly, putting in a, someplace for the night watchman without getting a permit, it's just on and on and on. I, I don't think he has a going concern, I don't see how he can possibly pay all these fines, and I don't, I think it's, I won't say that. So I would be one in favor of upholding the planning commissions, vote to revoke the use permit.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Frost?
I, I guess, are we to underst, Supervisor Peters summarized some of the fees, and I heard you say that they do, the loan would not cover AQMD fees. And so are we to assume that when the loan closes, they'll be able to pay the county fees, and then buy the updated chipper and machine that they need, so that they can be back in business and actually begin to make money, so they can then go after all the other costs and the improvements? Is, is that what we're to understand?
Two points. One, he has a legal chipper, he just has to get it permitted, and, and that's a fee of approximately $6,000, so we've discussed that. As far as their fee of $75,000, that's not a, a static number, that's something that's being worked on, so that's not a final fee. We're not ready to pay it. I don't think they're ready to assess that number yet. As far as not willing to be in compliance, I don't think that's quite accurate, in that we, we've submitted our plans, we, we had a set of plans prior. We spent a lot of money moving the telephone pole and getting ready to comply with the conditions. I mean, we've definitely showed the willingness and the determination to get this done. It's, it's not that we've completely ignored everything. We shouldn't have brought the wood on the site, that shouldn't have been done, and, and that's how we got here. But as far as conforming to the requirements, I think we're doing that. So there's enough money with the loan to pay the approximately $11,000 in county fees, and the cash-in lieu for the improvements. There's enough money for that coming through the law.
And the permit for the chipper is included in that, which puts them back in business.
Correct, correct.
And then what is the timeline, then, for clearing, clearing out the tons of wood piles?
To start removing, the total time to remove the amount of wood that's there now would be less than two weeks. Once the chipper's up and running, we're permitted, everything's good to go, and we had good weather. It would be about two weeks of operation, he would have that cleared out, and then he could get new wood and remove wood, and, and get the circular motion going, and be up and running. It's pretty, it's very feasible.
So, I guess, my thought is that if we uphold the recommendation to- Revoke the, the business license, then there's no opportunity for recovering any of the costs, and there's one less business that could have been a viable business. So I would be willing to support extending their opportunity to make things right.
Okay, anybody else? And I'll, I'm bringing it back here, certainly understanding my, two of the colleagues here and their views on this, that I signaled out a moment ago, that I'm willing to keep this on a very short string, I mean, like, matter of weeks, maybe 30 days. And again, with some good weather and the financing coming through, and number of these things could be satisfied, work could begin on, other things have been delineated here. There will be ongoing discussions with AQMD, and, and that could be a fairly high number, but, and clearing the material, if that's the case. And again, I, I do think that there needs to be a point when compliance is established in the very near future, and that would include the wood material being removed, and before, any new material, you can approach the body, Mr. Cern, but any new material were brought in, I mean, there shouldn't be one shred of wood coming on that side until, in the event that we did not revoke this today. But I would be, again, our staff work, certainly, you've got a lot of folks here that have worked this, that are, you know, have agreed to meet, and certainly your, your client as well, but there's a lot of staff time being devoted to this, and I think that's part of, you know, the concern, and I'll speak for myself on this, but probably shared by others here, that, you know, it's not just having this hearing, this is a piece of it, this is people's due process, but it's, you know, building up to this, all the departments, and the time taken away, and when there was a lot of ignoring of warnings and of, you know, of the normal processes that are, you know, allowed anyone who may have alleged violation. And, and so it's not just these hearings, and, you know, we get it bundled here with a presentation that's done in a, you know, in a format that allows for a good exchange, but a lot of frustration represented here, and maybe on behalf of your client as well. But nonetheless, he was the holder of the permit, he had the obligation to, you know, meet those requirements. And so I guess I would say that, and again, I don't know how the majority of this board feels, but I'd be willing to continue this for 30 days with certain things that need to be done, in progress, we could even outline those, and then have this back before us, and, and continue to hold the revocation. Again, I don't want to give any, you know, false sense of security, well, now, we can walk away, and, you know, we're just going to go ahead and do it. I'm not saying that's anybody's attitude, but that's not my attitude. I'm familiar with the site, and again, I think we, if we go this direction, we're stepping out, and again, you know, staff would much prefer that we just say, that's it. You know, if you want to start over again, then you come back in. And so this is, this is, you know, a chance, if we do this, to make it right, and I appreciate your representation of it, and, and I think that follow-through will be critical in the next 30 days. And I guess my expectation would be that, you know, unless the heavens open up and rains for the next three or four weeks, that there's significant progress made, that things are paid.
Can you define significant process?
Progress?
Progress?
Well, you said, if they can get that, the chipper permitted, that they can, in two weeks, get the material out there. Now, again, I don't know how muddy it is out there and so forth, so I'm-
Yeah, but what about paying us fines, and getting into compliance with, I mean, I just want to know what it is you expect in 30 days?
Yeah, pay the fines, and the air quality one, they got the, still on the mount, that wouldn't be paid, Susan.
We'll, we'll commit to paying the fines, and as far as-
And the in lieu?
The in lieu, that, that has to be determined by the county, so they have to look at the plans, and with the engineer, they'll come up with a number. So I, I don't want to say we'll have it paid in 30 days, because there might not be a number.
Okay, well, then county, I say put it on us, you figure out the number, and we need to tell them, so he can pay it, so that money doesn't go elsewhere.
But, but we can make a deposit toward it, you know, we can commit, in the meeting, I can say, maybe we can commit putting up $10,000 toward that, because it'd probably be more than that, obviously. So, you know, if they don't come up with a number in 30 days before the meeting, we'll have the fees paid, an additional 10 deposited with the county, so that they know we're acting in good faith. And then as far as chipping all the material, that's a matter of weather and getting the final-
You need to get that permit for the chipper, make your application to that, work with the air district, and the air district can accept the application, even with pending enforcement action?
Yes.
Dave, can you come forward? Because I will make this into motion in a moment, so we'll build it up, so you could-
It's, it's a little more complicated than that.
Okay.
We, we have not yet received an application for permit. We don't know which piece of equipment, or whether they've already obtained a piece of equipment that they wish to have permitted, moving forward, so we have nothing to evaluate at this point in time, so I can't commit to any timeframe or anything until that comes in.
Well, I think you said there was one piece of portable equipment that could be used.
For, for the temporary removal of what's, what's there. That can, that can happen, using a, a piece of equipment that we actually haven't observed, but he asserts is under PERP registration. That will, that will be for the purposes of mitigating whatever needs to be done here, we'll allow that.
Okay, that's what I was talking about, and I think it goes from Ms. Peters' question, though, you know, what would be done, you know, what's the understanding? And that, and I guess maybe for the record, Mr. Cern, so that's the piece of equipment we're talking about here, that you say is under-
Can you speak to that? Can you speak to that?
Correct, it's a, it's a red piece of-
Stay there, Dave.
It's a red piece of equipment, as I understand it, we discussed it in the meeting, and it can be permitted long-term at that site, and once it's done, it can't be moved around. So those are some of the issues that-
Rented piece of equipment?
It's a red.
Red.
We refer to it as the red chipper, because that's how we've all identified it.
Okay.
So it's the red chipper. He doesn't own it yet, but he has the right to use it. And the board's, staff's aware of that piece of equipment, and it's a legal piece of equipment that could be used on that site temporarily, and even permitted long-term, and then it'll be grandfathered in, as I understand it, but-
We're talking about kind of this first step, to get all that material cleared off of there, to get it into compliance, that's the thing, with the right-
My understanding, the staff would allow that. I'll, I'll let him to speak to that.
Dave?
Yeah, what, what makes this a, a kind of a difficult problem from PERP registration point of view, is he's created a stationary source through the facility, in our, in our opinion, so moving forward, and Supervisor Cern is going to, in his other role, going to be looking at this in June, there's a clarification of that, part of the PERP regulation, as well as the air toxic control measure that goes along with that. But, but we think that moving forward, that PERP registration use at that, at that facility will not be viable, because it's, it would be precluded by law. In the meantime, you know, we think that we've been shown the paperwork that, that shows PERP registration for what we've known as the, the red piece of equipment. The red piece of equipment is not on-site right now, so we're unable to verify that information. But even at the time when we do go through the permitting process, there are fees involved in that.
$6,000, I thought you said.
Roughly, I think it comes in at $6,961. And then annually after that, it'd be half that fee going forward, so.
Okay, but the $6,900, assuming it was the right piece of equipment that had the registration, and they paid the fees-
That comes in with the application.
They could put, they could put it into use, then, and they could use it to take the piles down, the ones that are there. We're talking about the, you know, getting into compliance, and I think that's-
Right.
A milestone that needs to be achieved before we go any further.
Right, and even if, even if allowed to use PERP equipment, that turns into a pumpkin in 2020, and so that wouldn't be a viable use after that.
Okay, got it. Mr. Cern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think as I made clear last time, the representative for the patent was here, I was willing to express, you know, a substantial amount of deference to, to you, in terms of this being a, obviously, an issue in District 5. But that I also qualified my tempered support for the motion then, with, I look at this from the standpoint of how do we treat people equally, agents equally, when it comes to compliance with, with our ordinances? And so I'm, I'm feeling even more itchy about it this time, if, if the motion is going to take the form of 30 days, and I'm hearing, you know, layaway plans for how you pay fees, I'm just not getting much more comfortable, quite frankly, with kicking this can. So I, I guess I agree with Supervisor Peters. I like to know when, when, in your mind, because I want to be, again, respectful of the fact that it's in your district, when in your mind will there- when in your mind will there be no, a determination of either compliance or not? Because they, they may come back with some incremental progress, whatever that might be, in 30 days, and we have the same discussion, and in theory, this could, this could go on for a number of meetings and a number of months.
Well, I delineate some of those things, and Leanne certainly helped, but if we get to a form of motion that would be one that, again, and I won't even have to caveat for weather, I think there's probably good enough weather windows now, that, that in 30 days, I guess, the expectation that I would have, and I set forth in the motion, that you would permit that, permit the chipper, and you would go to work, and this would be a priority for Mr. Howe and anybody else that he got employed, to basically, you know, finish the material and get it off-site, and come in full compliance with the amount of tonnage that's permitted under the use permit. Another portion of that would be that with the financing, that you would pay any of the outstanding fines in building code and environmental management, you're still in the process, obviously, negotiating with EMD. And that we would have for you a, at least a full estimate for what it would be for the in-lu, and that that would be paid, that would be paid in full, the deposit, and it wouldn't be on us to not have given that to you, but that would be paid. And those would be three of the conditions that I would have, and that the progress would continue then on, assuming the weather permits it, but on fencing and other things that have already been set in motion. And, and clearly, again, in 30 days, if you haven't, you know, you haven't got an air quality permit, for whatever reason, the red machine got broke down or whatever, well, that becomes too many excuses, I think, to your point, to Mr. Cern, and certainly to what Susan said earlier, is that there needs to be milestones. You've met some of those, as coming off of 30 days, but 30 days can pass pretty quickly. And I've heard you saying there's a good faith, willingness, we may, we'll put a commitment together, and, and, you know, if you can meet it, fine, and if not, we could still be in the same spot, because either way, those got to be paid, and you got to get it cleaned up, and so, it may be not the outcome people are looking for as it relates to this permit, and it potentially being revoked. But that would be, I'd be willing to put those in, in the form of motion, and, you know, give the applicant until the, I guess, we're back in 28th of March, or 21st, wouldn't be the April?
March 21st is our next.
Okay, well, that's not in full month.
Then it's April 11th, then April 25th.
Okay, well, then I would be the April 11th, that'd give you a few more days. But that, basically, we'd set those forth, and then, other conditions, I would entertain those as well. If other people wanted to add stuff, that's, anyway, that was
Is that, so am I hearing fees paid in, in whole?
Yeah, fees paid in full. The only one would be the air quality one, because they don't really know that yet. That one, he's, he's said that they could pay that, but I mean, there's going to have to be a plan for paying that.
We do have that attachment one to your report that listed conditions. Maybe that would help, if you worked off of that, in terms of, some of them would have to be modified. We have the immediate action items, no additional wood waste, excepted at the site. I think that one's pretty clear. Are you following along?
Okay.
Obviously, we would delete the next one, no chipping or grinding, because you're contemplating allowing that in order to remove what's there.
But, but you could say that, but chipping or grinding materials would be undertaken with the permitted piece of equipment. I mean, we could state that very affirmatively.
With permitted equipment, yeah.
Okay.
Pay all fines. I think, basically, we would delete the wood debris removal, that would be covered by the chip and grind all existing materials, and remove it on-site, right?
Okay.
Basically, the second bullet and the fourth bullet would be combined into allowing them to chip and grind, and remove the material from the site.
Okay.
The next one, remove inoperable vehicles. It sounds like there's only two, so that could be done.
Okay.
Doesn't sound like junk and rubbish is too big of an issue. But we could receive confirmation from code enforcement, complete immediate action items by AQMD and EMD. I think the key thing that I'm unclear about what the board's expectation is in 30 days is whether we expect them to complete all site right-of-way and roadway improvements. I'm not convinced that can get done in 30 days, but we could get a report back.
But he could get a permit and pay for the permit.
Yeah, but they're going to pay the in-lu.
They'd pay the in-lu, that's what he said, Leanne, that they would take, you know, the IOD and take the deposit for the Bradshaw Road wide and so forth.
And when I hear pay, pay fees fully, that, that would be included?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
I heard Mr. Simon said that they were contemplating doing that. So, that would be in lieu of making those frontage improvements, and as Susan says, not only have the permit, whatever's required for that, and to pay those fees. And, again, we could, you know, give them the amount of money that they need to, to pay in order to satisfy that, so.
Got it. All right, so that, I think, covers what we had laid out and the things that you've articulated.
Okay, and so
What did you decide on air quality fees, Don?
Well, that they, you need to pay the permit for the chipper, the $6,900, and they're still, I guess, negotiating the determination. I guess that when we came back next, if they made progress on all of these, that's going to be probably the biggest
So, if they come to agreement on what the fee is for air quality, should that be paid?
It was going to need to be paid, but would it be something we would demand? Typically, sometimes you can work that out, Dave, so, I mean, it's a fair question. And I know you do negotiate those.
So, as, as you know, that we have a mutual settlement program, which follows a formulaic penalty. So, we're distinguishing penalties from fees. Fees would be for the permit application, that sort of thing. The penalty is for past violations.
Yeah, and I meant, my word was to include all, I may have said fees, but
Exactly, I understood, but I just wanted to make a clarification for the record. The, you know, it's, it's unlikely, I think Supervisor Peters, you asked if half of that was, was capable of being paid. That's, that's likely in the ballpark of where we're going to end up on, on that, on that penalty. You know, we, we think that we have all the information now that, that our penalty is close to being set. We did make an adjustment based on some information that we received when we met with them. We asked a number of other questions, we still have some information that we probably need to receive, but, but right now, we're getting pretty close to where it's going to end up.
But, but there's still a process to go through, so I guess, but within, by April 11th, do you think that there would be some determination around that? Again, I mean, there's still going to be the question of how it's going to get paid, and I, that's not an unfair question, but determination, do you think you would have that through mutual settlement process? If people were active in that, to have some determination?
A lot of that will depend on the respondent providing us with the information that we've asked for.
Okay.
If I may, so, but it is in the realm of possibility that, that if they provided the information, it was set in motion, everything that needs to be done, in terms of partial, or, you know, enough fee payment so that they get the permit to operate the machinery, right? So that, what we're talking about here, by April 11th, actually could happen in theory.
The, the permit, we could expedite it if we received the fee for the permit. They could, they can put a legal piece of equipment in there, and we can permit that. That would be separate from our, from our penalties. Both of those happening at the same time, it's, it's possible, but not very likely, that it moves that quickly.
So, does that mean that we would set ourselves up so that they would not be able to meet the deadline?
I thought you just said you were almost certainly there. It sounded like you were a couple of days away from coming up with a number.
Well, as I said, we're still expecting some information back from them to come up with the precise number to make
Well, let's pretend that they would give you that information tomorrow.
Okay.
Then, is it possible that they could do everything to come into compliance based on what you've heard up here?
We would send them a, an amended settlement offer, and they could pay it at any time after that.
But, but what about the permit, so that they actually do the machine? Because that's the other piece, that's the active piece of this, you got the piece that they're going to owe for violations that will be settled on. You said you could expedite the permit. Again, I know you probably, you know, the tendency would be, you know, for someone who's caused grief in the department, you know, but recognizing the emphasis, if they came up with the $6,900, showed you the proof of registration or certification, that permit could be issued, how, what's it take, a day or two to issue that permit? Or how long?
Not on that one, it's, it's a little more complex. We'd have to do a health risk assessment on it, because it, diesel is a hazardous air pollutant, toxic air contaminant.
Okay, so this is for the equipment that you said is already permitted, though?
No, the, the PERP-registered equipment can
That's what I meant, that's what I get to.
can operate now without anything happening.
Okay, so that piece of equipment, that, that red machine could go out there and operate right now?
We're, we're allowing properly PERP-ed piece of equipment, which is the red machine.
To go out there and take down a pile that's already in existence, they could
Yes, we've agreed that we'll allow it to do what's necessary to comply.
So, there's no, so there's no holdup, there's no requirement for that one. Now, if they, long-term, they want to continue the operation and stay in compliance, they've got to go through this other process. And so, that's why I said, there has to be a, clear the body line, get this cleaned up, and then you've got to get the permits for the machinery that would allow that operation to be, you know, to misfrost's point, allow you to continue to cycle the material through under the permitted requirements. But to get this into compliance, to get that cleaned up, you have a piece of equipment that right now
Right.
they go out there, they go out this afternoon and operate it.
Well, we need to, we need to line up the, the registration that we saw with the piece of equipment. That, right now, has not been confirmed yet, but we're assuming that that's going to be the case.
Okay, and Mr. Simon, that, that's doable, tomorrow morning, somebody could be out there, if they had somebody available, you could line that up, I mean, if the equipment's out there on-site, and you got the paperwork.
And you got, you got fair weather for a few days.
I don't think the equipment's on-site, but generally
Oh, it's not, oh, it's not, okay.
That, that's correct, so there's that issue.
It's portable, but it can get here, it's
It's not in Illinois or something?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay, because again, I think that's going to be, I mean, it goes to the questions here, is that, is this doable? It's, it's doable?
That's doable.
And, and our folks are, go ahead.
The only thing that's, that's not doable, and all due respect to staff and my client, is the due process of the fee. I mean, we could have gone in last week and paid $125,000, and we'd have been $50,000 off.
Yeah.
So, there's a due process, we have to look at their file, we have to come to an understanding of what the fee is for, because it goes by the, what machine was operated, how long, it's a pretty complicated
It's a settlement process, yes.
It's a settlement process, it's going to take, you know, to, to be honest, I took the oath. So, my belief is that it would take months, not 30 days. But, but we're working with it, I respond to every email I get, I've made myself available anytime, anyplace, and, you know, we're showing our good faith to move forward on it.
Okay. Dave, is that fairly reflected, you believe he's made himself available? I trust what he says, but that, you know, since we've had this conversation, that they're being available to talk about the settlement portion of this?
I, I think Mr. Simon has been available, what we have yet to receive, though, is from the respondent, information to finalize our settlement offer,
Okay.
which they can negotiate and, and reject or accept.
So, that material then, Mr. Simon, because again, I think it goes to the, you know, action we're going to take here, potentially in a moment, is that that could be provided in the next two weeks?
Yes.
All right, so on the record, the next two weeks, you have that information, assuming we don't revoke the permit here, so, okay. All right, is that
You don't want to restate the motion?
Well, no, I will restate the motion, no, I think it needs to be stated, I think Leanne helped with this. And so, yeah, I would restate the motion that, looking to attach about one, Leanne, and maybe you can help walk through this, that immediate action items, no additional wood waste, excepted at the site. We would allow chipping or grinding, in fact, we're going to ask that that be done. Basically, the, we're basically asking that with these permitted piece of equipment, that the goal will be by April 11th to have that material down to what would meet the permit, you know, what was permitted under the original use permit, which is a lot of material, but I'm trusting that people can, can do that. So, we put that in the condition, and that would combine, what, two, two and four, you said, bullets here?
Yes. So, basically, they would chip and grind all the existing material to get it down
Yeah, with permitted equipment, with
With permitted equipment, yeah.
Okay. And then pay all existing fines and fees associated with the code enforcement case, and all existing fines with the EMD and building permit, which is about $11,000. Remove the inoperable vehicles, and confirmation from code enforcement staff, it's sufficiently cleared, the industrial standards.
Mm-hmm. So
And then, the last bullet would be
Yeah, meeting the industrial standards, the last one, complete all site right-of-way and roadway improvements. We talked about the in-lu fees, but the site improvements were the fencing, the driveway improvements, all that. I don't know that they will have that done in 30 days.
No, they can, need to show continued process and progress on
Right, they need to go shop, we can report back, but
And can I just clarify on the in-lu? Because I thought I heard that it was about $20,000, and I thought I heard an offer to make it a positive 10. So, I'm, want to make sure that we're clear.
He said he didn't know, but otherwise, he said they'd pay him in full, if I understood. Yeah, they, he said if they didn't have a number to him, Chris, but I would say that we would have a number to them, and that we would have those paid in full. So, it's an obligation for LDSIR or SIPs to, to get that to him, based upon plans that have been submitted. And if there's a permit that comes with that, then that permit is going to be issued as well, so. Because they've submitted improvement plans for the conditions, is that, that last bullet, under immediate action, that's what they did today?
I, I believe, yeah, yes, yes.
And that's what needs to be calculated, the fees on, okay? Sorry to be so complacent, but, and so, I would add those, and that we have, April 11th, we'd have, also add information for the settlement would be then submitted by the respondent within two weeks. Mr. Simon?
I just want to add, there was a condition on the use permit, and I don't want to conflict with the promise I make today.
Can you make, can you get between the microphones, please?
I just want to make sure that we have an understanding, because there was a prohibition on chipping during a certain time of the year, and I think that goes through April 15th, doesn't it? So, we, under the use permit, we're not allowed to chip until after April 15th.
And that's why?
Staff had made that recommendation in the original use permit, which I wasn't involved, so.
I believe it was storm water quality related?
So, yeah, apparently, because the property was unimproved, they were worried about flooding and debris.
Okay, so, that, in
Clearly, it's a wet year, so
I appreciate that, because again, if we were to say you have done by April 11th, then we're basically telling them to violate the
When they can't start until 40 years later.
Yeah, I, I'll admit I wasn't either. What if we went more like 60 days instead? That would get us past that date, and allow them
Paying the fines and fees and all that within, you know, within 15 or 20 days, and then having the material, I guess, again, I appreciate you raising that issue, otherwise, we would have put you in a
They could stage, they can stage to get ready to go.
Yes, yeah.
We're staged, we're ready.
Well, you aren't, because you don't have the machinery there.
You don't have the equipment on-site.
Right?
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, but at any rate, I've been prepared to, in light of that, unless we were going to give them exception to the condition that we, I guess, apparently put on there. Of course, if it wasn't going to flood this year, probably not going to flood any year, but nonetheless, if that condition can do anything to April 15th, then I guess we'd give them till, it would be a May, it would be a May date.
We could do May 9th.
Okay, so they meet all the other conditions besides the chipping and grinding, have all the material off, and give it till, to May 9th? That'd give you roughly three weeks then to get it done in, so, that's a pretty, pretty short window, and gives you time to stage, and we're going to know, you know, what the settlement is, and all these things that are And I'd just say, Mr. Simon, and Mr. Howes, and the audience, that if these are not satisfied, I, you know, and, you know, if there's some reasons why people can't do it, I think there's been enough time given, so, I mean, the action's been taken the last 30 days, shows some progress. The big, the big climb is in the next, next 30 to 60 days, and so, and if not, I'm, my tolerance level will be very, very low for, you know, any further continuance based upon whatever reason people come up with that didn't have the money or whatever. They need to be satisfied, and I think there's a plan here, albeit the staff is not recommending that, and my colleagues are not too happy with this either. But that would be my motion, then, Leanne, detailed. Attachment one, do you, you want to run down one more time, so everybody understands, and now we may have a change, please?
No additional wood waste at the site, chip and grind with permitted equipment.
After April 15th?
After April 15th, pay all existing fines and fees, remove inoperable vehicles, confirmation from code enforcement that the site is sufficiently cleared to meet industrial vacant lot developments requirements. Pay the in-lu fees for right-of-way and roadway improvements, and make progress on site improvements. Provide information for the settlement with AQMD.
And that's within, within two weeks, you need to respond, yeah.
Yes.
So, in 15 days.
Does that cover it?
Okay, did I cover everybody's condition?
Yeah, I, I'm prepared to, to second the motion, but I want to make clear that the appellant and the representative understand that what you're hearing in terms of our frustration is not because we have some burning desire to stick it to people. That's not, that's not why we're here. But what we are here to do is make sure that our local laws are enforced equally, and, and our ordinances. So, again, I said it before, and I said it at the previous meeting, my, my interest here is trying to get to a solution that's workable, but at the same time, keeping in mind that there could be an appellant next month that was watching this hearing, has watched the last hearing, said, well, look what you, look at the treatment you applied last time, we'd like the same treatment. And so, that's when we get on some pretty thin ice. So, I agree with the, the chair that, you know, I think the collective tolerance is probably going to be very, very limited, so we're going to expect results.
Okay, all right, so, the motion would be then including those items as outlined, you understand it, Mr. Saman, on behalf of your client, okay? And we can, we can give them a written confirmation of this, so we'll clean it up, so you'll have that, and, and then I would move that we continue this to May 9th, continue the hearing open, and with a...
2:00 P.M.
2:00 P.M., 2:00 in the afternoon on May 9th, so, hopefully we'll have a good report and continue to move, make progress. All right, that's my motion, the second. Any other comments or questions by board members, staff? All right, please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters voting no.
Okay, all right. Go forth and do good work, got 60 days. All right, Flo.
Okay, so our final item, or our next item, excuse me, is item 54. This is your appointments from your own ranks to various boards and commissions. We'll be referring to the attachment spreadsheet. So for today's items, we have a few items that we still need to follow up on from the last meeting, and I can just start with the first one, would be the Adult and Aging Commission.
Yes, on this one, I actually spoke at the commission last week, and I've talked with my chief of staff, and assuming that no other members of the board, chief of staff is, is interested in doing this, Cheryl's willing, Cheryl Venegas is willing to serve in this capacity, at least for this year, and, and so I would nominate her.
Okay.
All right.
And the next item is the Area For Agency on Aging Governing Board, Supervisor Frost?
I'd like to nominate Felicia Bae as alternate. Spelled B-H-E.
Okay, update that. And then our next item is the Cal ID Ran Board, County Exec.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I need a little bit more time on this nomination.
Okay, all right, come back.
Our next item...
60 days?
Two, two weeks.
Is your chipper in working order?
And I also want to point out that I was respectfully asking the board if I could follow up for these items today via a memo to the board with an updated spreadsheet of your own ranks listing.
Sure.
Okay, so the next...
It's shorter, we're all ready.
Your next item is the Human Services Coordinating Council.
Yeah, I would suggest, I guess we have, go ahead.
I would like to make a recommendation to nominate our clerk to that.
Okay, want to second that? Okay, that's fine, Flo, glad you were willing to do that.
Okay, for your Regional Airport Planning Committee, I would like to recommend that your board would remove this from your own ranks list due to the fact that they are inactive status. The last meeting that was held was March 2013. I understand that in 2014, there were three meetings that were all canceled, and I also spoke with Director John Wheat to confirm this, and also spoke with a representative from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission listed as the contact person who confirmed that the board is inactive.
Okay.
Your next item is the Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board, Supervisor Frost.
Let's see, altered on the library board.
The Public Library Board.
I'd like to continue that, please.
Okay.
For the San Joaquin Valley Rail Committee, I would also like to recommend that the board remove this from the own ranks list. This body is now an advisory committee to the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority. The membership on this board is not comprised of elected officials, and appointments are made to this body by the SJJPA.
Okay, so noted, good work.
And then for your final pending item is the Tobacco Securitization Corporation, Mr. Gill.
As fascinating as this corporation is, we cannot find somebody, so I need more time, maybe 60 days?
Okay, okay.
And that concludes my notes for your own ranks and my comments.
All right, well, thank you, Clerk's Office, County Executive's Office, to the other offices for helping, I said we narrowed the list down quite a bit, so, good.
Okay.
All right, that concludes that item. Any else, Flo, you have?
I have nothing further for item 54. Now we're on to your county executive comments.
All right.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I do have one item that I wanted to provide some clarification to the board. Since we had the reduction in our budget starting in 2010, we did make some decisions with mental health and emergency room, and the utilization of how those services were provided to those individuals. Since then, we've had ongoing dialogues with our partners in the hospital, and they've always advocated, as they should, that they're getting a lot of traffic into their emergency room, and they wanted some relief. In 2014, they really started their process again with us, and in it, we started having some dialogue with them, saying, "What can we do to alleviate the issues you're having?" A committee was formed at that point that had representatives from Sutter, Dignity, Kaiser, UC Davis, Sacramento Medical Society, DHHS, County Executive's Office, I was the Assistant County Exec, Paul Lake, our Chief Deputy, and Sierra Health Foundation also participated in it, and at that point, our newest member of the board sort of volunteered for that role, so Supervisor Kennedy participated, and we spent better part of 2015, from January till May, working with this group to see what, what kind of solutions could we bring to alleviate the issues about providing medical care for the, for this population, basically, not stereotype, but most of them were homeless, they were ending up in emergency departments. That work resulted in us coming to you with a recommendation for, in June 2015, to allocate $5.7 million to create three more crisis residential units. And that's the work that we've been doing since then, is we had one that located in Supervisor Frost's jurisdiction, Rio Linda, we're looking at two more geographical areas. So I want to kind of give that preamble, because since then, there is a grant that's been called the Whole Person Grant, that the state has been asking counties to participate in, and it is using Medicaid dollar amount to help some of this program, to help the homeless or folks that need medical services. In their website, DHCS does say that it is to increase, improve, and achieve integration among county agencies, health plans, providers, other participating entities, coordinate and appropriate access to care, access to housing and supporting, supportive services, health outcome, healthy outcome for this population, data collection, and targeted quality admin improvement benchmarks, you kind of get the flavor, there's a lot of work that we're already doing in the county, and stated goal at that point is reduction of inappropriate emergency department and inpatient utilization. And when this grant opportunity was put forward to DHHS, our department is always looking for money to see how we can augment our services, they looked at it, they studied the grant with the preamble that I started, that we already have $5.7 million that the board are each year asking you to put in to help some of the goals that are stated here, and they looked at the grant, and the provisions in the grant, they found some difficulties with it. One of them was that if we were to participate, is that to use a matching amount, so the county would have to provide to the state, to the feds, I want to use for discussion purposes, $10 million will be your matching grant, and then we will get matching money coming back, so we had to put our own money into it. Also, there's a six-month requirement of making, reporting on activities and collecting data, and at that point, then the state would access the money, money will come back to The other issue that they, when they analyzed it, it so far sounds like we're already doing this work, we should be in it, is that since we do not have a county hospital, collecting this data is kind of encumbrousome, and that's one of the things that, and that works, Supervisor Kennedy, when we were there, we spent some time discussing, how do we get all this data in, what do we do with it? So the determination was made that this was not, if you will, a grant that the county was willing to pursue at that point, and so, I wanted to clarify that, because there has been some discussion, and I've had individual board members ask me, "How come the county didn't pursue that?" That is not in any way, I want to leave the board with the impression that we're not interested in grants or working with state and with our partners, they've been fantastic, our health systems, in reducing this issue, but this grant, given the requirements that we had, we did decide to take a pass on it. I am going to ask our director from Department of Health and Human Services to memorialize what I just said, so that you have that for your record, I'm going to have her give it to Flo, so that you have the background behind it, but I do not want to leave the board with the impression that if there was any kind of grant money that the county had access to, that we did not take that seriously. We did take it seriously, we saw the work being very much close to what we're already doing, we have this commitment of $5.7 million that we're putting in there, in June budget, you're going to hear again, and we make, every six months or so, we give you a status where we are, so in June, we're slated to come back and let you know what kind of work we're doing on it. So I know that County Council was very careful with me, not to deviate too far off, I know it's not on the agenda, but in talking with County Council, and, is that I did feel that we had to clear the air a little bit, and we will memorialize this in a memo to you.
Thanks, Nav. Mr. Cernan, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, and I know Dr. Heller's going to give some more detail?
No, it's a memo that we're going to give you, it's not on the agenda, so we're trying to make sure that we're not...
Understood. So, first of all, I appreciate the careful explanation. What I didn't hear, but what I thought I heard in at least my one-on-one conversations with you, Nav, and with Dr. Heller, was that we also had other competing grants that were of interest to the, the county that we did apply for. So, again, to the point that you're stressing, which is making sure the public, or, you know, any other elected bodies believe that we were sitting on our hands when we really weren't, it's not just that we were taking hard looks at this particular grant opportunity, but we were looking at a whole menu of grant opportunities, and we did, we did respond affirmatively to apply for those grants as well, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and, and we will have this in the memo, and some of the funding opportunities that we're still pursuing, no place like home, housing initiative, we are absolutely in on that, drug and alcohol Medicaid waiver, we're working on that, Prop 47, we just made the application, the board authorized it two weeks ago, so that, that's some of the examples that we have of grants that we pursue that come through the county.
Great, thank you.
It's right, Kennedy.
Yeah, I'll further even follow up on that. For the last two years, we have been applying for MHSA dollars, which we've been very successful and very competitive at getting, and so, when, you know, it's insinuated that the county walked away from money and didn't look at this opportunity, I can say for, just to back up with a county exec has had to say, that I myself have been in a number of meetings, not only with our staff, but outside organizations, including the Steinberg Institute, in which our staff was present, I was present, and/or my staff was present, in which we took a real good, hard look at this and a good run at this, and frankly, we're not in the position of turning down money if we think it's something that's viable. One thing that I've learned in the last couple of years is that there's about 58 different ways of delivering mental health services in the state of California, and so it's not a one-size-fits-all. Unfortunately, this one didn't pan out. It's not to say that we don't aggressively go after them, and will continue to do so, if that's accurate.
And I would just add one comment, I appreciate the, the update, because I think that, you know, at least having some additional explanation behind it, and we'll get that in, in written form as well, but, you know, when we get the notice, as it was on today's agenda, that, you know, the utilization of beds, it's still, you know, pretty static, and we're having to supplement once again to the conversation we've had over ensuing, you know, a couple of years, if not three years now, of having to continue to put in millions of dollars, and meanwhile, we're, you know, making efforts to try to reduce those bed days, and certainly the impacts on the hospitals, but just, you know, have better access, to Mr. Kennedy's point about, you know, better access for folks who, you know, some that come to crisis, but before they ever get there, and, you know, I think we've made some, some, some good inroads, but, you know, we continue to spend a lot of money, and I, and I guess I would trust, and that's why I make this comment, is that, you know, examining, putting in the continued amount of dollars we're putting in just to buy bed days, if we would have thought that this was, you know, a wise move, you know, then I know we would look really hard, whether it made sense to put those, you know, put monies up to match the grant, to try to, you know, achieve the desired outcomes, and, and being that we don't have a county hospital, I guess we were dependent upon, in, 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 in large part, if not entirely, on the hospitals to give us that information, both the, those that operate programs, but the psychiatric ones as well, and with the exception of SMIC, which is, you know, mental health treatment facility, I guess you could put it in category hospitals, but certainly not the, the hospital systems, and so, again, I think that, you know, anytime, you know, you criticize for not, you know, pursuing dollars, that we need to at least offer an explanation as to why that is, because we rarely turn down that opportunity, if it's going to do good for the folks in this county, so. Yep, all right, any other comments on this? Thank you, Nav, and I appreciate Dr. Heller and Paul being in the audience this afternoon, so. Okay, without any other, you're going to get another shot tomorrow afternoon, so if you didn't get it all in today, you can be back tomorrow afternoon. Okay, Supervisor comments, let me turn here, Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Peters, Kennedy, Supervisor Cernan.
I'm going to have the clerk focus in on the flyer here. It is that time of year again, the man unsupervised will be playing its fourth, now fourth annual Department of Human Assistance, Department of Health and Human Services Scholarship fundraising gig this year, it's at Harlow's here in downtown Sacramento on J Street, Midtown Sacramento, I should say, Monday, March 27th, and we're hoping to set a new record in terms of funds raised to match those dollars that our very generous employees in both agencies generate every year to help deserving young people that are heading to college, so I'll probably be doing this a few more times between now and March 27th, it is a school night, as many have pointed out, it's on a Monday this year, but we hope to have yet another good time raising funds for a very good cause.
Very good. Thanks, Phil, to you and your unsupervised crew for raising money for a very good, worthy cause. Okay, if there's nothing else coming for this body, tomorrow, I apologize, we missed lunch today, but tomorrow, if you missed lunch, it's your own fault, because we won't be in session till 2:00, so. So, with that, we'll stand in adjournment and be back tomorrow, too.